We're ready? Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Wow, I sound really loud today. Welcome to the Village Council meeting for the Village of Palis Park, Monday, October 9th. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan? Present.
Here.
Present.
Yep.
Present. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our last council meeting, September 11th, 2023. Any changes or additions? If not, I seek a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion is second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, moving on to recognition, proclamations, appointments, and presentations. In June, our community outreach project was set in place by me to offer residents an opportunity to get involved in the community. Applications were made available to fill vacancies on village boards and committees. Most positions were filled and approved at the village council meeting of August 14, 2023. Additional applications were submitted for various vacancies that remained, and myself and my colleagues reviewed those applications and the corresponding documents. So today, I'd like to approve the appointment of the following residents to their respective boards and note their terms to expire. So if you are here when I call your name, will you just please come stand in the front so we can take a little picture? Teresa Gavin, Zoning Board of Appeals, please come up front with a term to expire June 1st, 2028. Lisa Gibbs, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire June 1st, 2028. Carol Alicia, Beautification Committee, term to expire June 1st, 2026. Carol Anderson, Beautification Committee, term to expire June 1st, 2026. And Liz Galvin, Newcomers Welcoming Ad-Hoc Committee, with no term to expire. So at this time, I'd like to seek a motion to approve these residents to their respective boards and with the terms to expire as noted.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion is second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Yes, and let's see. Can anybody here take a quick picture of the group? Can you do that for us, please? I really appreciate it. Oh, no, let them have their picture. We'll post that. Just want to thank you all for, you know, being willing to volunteer your time for the village, and we really appreciate it, so thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have no hearings. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A to ratify payments of invoices on the warrant list dated September 25th, 2023 in the amount of $115,526.03. To approve the Palis Fire Professional Firefighter's Raffle License and Raffle Manager Bond Waiver Request for a raffle to be held on Friday, December 1st, 2023, to be held at the Palis Park Firehouse. Item C, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated October 9, 2023 in the amount of $117,415.48. And item D, to approve the supplemental warrant list dated October 9, 2023 for manual checks, payroll, and recurring wire transfers in the amount of $484,392.50. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion is second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, any items of old business from anyone? If not, moving on to board commission and committee recommendations. And are you going to take this, Commissioner Wade?
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. Real quick, I have three items here, but the first two are basically together. Agenda matter PC 2023-02, Lot Consolidation. This deals with an application put forth by Tom and Crystal Page requesting approval of a plot of consolidation pursuant to Section 1244, spot 09 of the Village Code. This item and the following item regarding a variance are being made to allow for an addition to the existing home and for the construction of a new accessory building on the property commonly known as 12344 Post Road in Palis Park. A little background on this, the subject property consists of two parcels. The northerly parcel is currently vacant. The southerly parcel is developed with a single-family residence, which complies with currently applicable regulations. The applicants propose to consolidate the two lots into a single lot, build in addition to the existing home, and build a new accessory building, a pole building, in what is currently the northerly vacant parcel. Per Section 1286, spot 06A1, the code does not allow any accessory buildings to be constructed on a lot that does not have a principal structure, you know, basically a house on it. To comply with this requirement, the applicants propose to consolidate the two lots into one. However, by consolidating the two lots into one, the required side setback, which is based on lot width, would increase from 22.5 to 49.5 feet. And this would create a nonconformity with the existing house. It has been determined that the proper way to handle this consolidation and nonconformity would be for the plan commission to review and consider a side yard variance as allowed per 1220, spot 05, along with the plot of consolidation. Back on September 21st, the Plan Commission did meet and approved this recommendation on a vote of seven-nothing. So are there any questions or concerns? Just because they are too separate, I will then move to approve ordinance 2023-18, an ordinance approving a plot of consolidation pursuant to 12344 Post Road in Palis Park.
I will second that.
Hearing a motion is second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
And my next one is just the ordinance for the variance. So an application has been filed by Tom and Crystal Page requesting approval of a variation from the requirements of Chapter 1268, spot 02, side yards regarding the existing home. A proposed lot consolidation would result in an increased required side yard setback of 49.5 feet, whereas the existing home is only 22.5 feet from the south side lot line. This item and the previous one, which we just talked about, are being made to allow for an addition to the existing home for the construction of a new accessory building on the property commonly known as 12344 Post Road in Palis Park. Again, the Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on this back on September 21st and approved this by a vote of seven-nothing. There are no questions?
Commissioner Wade, would you just read out what the staff recommends as far as conditions of the approval? And so that if we're going to approve it as with these conditions?
Yeah, so the staff did recommend this for a couple of reasons. One, it addresses any concerns the village engineer prior to the permit issuance regarding relocating the proposed pole barn at at least 20 feet from the easement. The proposed, and then number two, the proposed side yard variance applies only to the existing home on the property and does not apply to any potential additions, enlargements to the home that may occur after this date of the ordinance approval. For example, any addition to the home must comply with the required 49.5-foot side yard setback. And then finally, to comply with the requirement regarding only two accessory buildings, either by removing one of the existing sheds or through means of combining two sheds into one. We like when people follow the rules. It's good.
You made a motion?
No. Are there any questions, Al? If not, I move to approve ordinance 2023-19, an ordinance approving a certain side yard setback variation, 12344 Post Road.
I will second that motion.
Hearing a motion is second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Then my last recommendation, we are actually going to continue it, but it deals with the Village of Palis Park requesting consideration of text amendments to the Village Code. We're looking at amending three sections, but we're going to push that off to the next meeting. So we can address some things and tie at some loose ends. So with that, I just move to continue ordinance 2023-20, an ordinance amending Part 12, Title VI, Chapter 1274, Sections 127402, 127403, and Part 12, Title VI, Chapter 1278, Section 127802 of the Palis Park Village Code in regard to permitted and special uses in the B1 and B2 zoning districts.
I will second that.
Hearing a motion is second.
Continuation should be to a date specific, so the 23rd of October.
I agree, sorry.
That needs to be part of the...
All right, cool. So I move to continue ordinance 2023-20 to October 23rd, dealing with the ordinance amending Part 12, I gotta do that, okay. Part 12, Title VI, Chapter 1274, Sections 127402, 127403, and Part 12, Title VI, Chapter 1278, Section 127802 of the Palis Park Village Code in regard to permitted and special uses in the B1 and B2 zoning districts.
Okay, I will second that.
Hearing a motion is second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Wade. We're moving on to information and updates. Up first, Public Works and Streets and Recreation Report, Commissioner Patan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda for Public Works except for some information that on October 16th, the paving program with Gallagher will... So far, sounds like they're going to go ahead and move forward with that. So if you have any questions, you can look on our website or call the village on what streets are being paved. But so far, the weather is cooperating, and it will be on October 16th. Moving on to Recreation, we have lots of little things happening in the Recreation Department. So yesterday, we had the Ages 50 and Better Club. A big thank you to the... We did have overwhelming attendance, at least 50 to my count. And we got our Ages to 50 and Better relaunch event yesterday. The club will meet regularly the second Monday of every month from noon to 2:30 for a lunch and a show. So join us on Monday, November 13th for the next event, but registration is required. Next is the Catch Corner Facility Registration System, launched October 2nd. So what this is, is it's a website and an app used to book your rentals. And it's similar to that OpenTable app and lets you book your group's dinner, like lets you book your group's reservation. So it's kind of the same set of ideas. So this website and app will make booking at the Recreation Center for a party, a sports team, or a friendly pickup game, much easier. So now through November 30th, any reservation made through the Catch Corner app system will get $10 off using promotion code VP10 with an exclamation mark. So yeah, go ahead and use it. I haven't tried it yet, but it'll be a lot easier to make your reservations at the Rec Center. Moving into fall, the second sort of half of fall, which you can't even believe it because we think we're all just started fall, the classes are starting soon. So we're midway through the fall season and have some incredible programs starting the next few weeks to keep kids engaged before the holidays. One is the Snapology, which is a robot challenge, which starts this Wednesday, October 11th. We also have youth volleyball, starting Tuesday, October 17th. And then thirdly, we have the Do Good Movement, which is a pre-K yoga and social-emotional leaning, yeah, learning, which starts October 19th, which is a Thursday. So any information on any of these programs, you know, head to the village website or email the Recreation Department at palispark.org. We also had the Fall Fishing Derby. This is an annual fall fishing derby at Horsetail Lake. It's this Saturday, October 14th, in partnership with the Forest Preserves of Cook County. The fishing derby is from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Fishing poles and bait will be available in limited quantities. We will have prizes for the largest catch and the most caught. And finally, Palis Park is having their Spooky Shuffle. So don't forget about this because the participants must register by October 9th. Are we done with October 9th already? I think we are.
It's today.
Oh, it's today. Oh, boy. So get online quickly before midnight, October 9th, to guarantee their shirt and size that is available. The Palis Park Spooky Shuffle is a 5K or 10K trail run-walk. It is this Sunday, October 22nd, at Swallow Cliff. And that highlights the sprawling woodlands and the majestic SAG Valley Trial System. And that concludes my information, Mayor.
Well, you had so much to tell us about.
Oh, yes.
I will tell you that last I checked, about five, six days ago, we had 80 runners already registered for Spooky Shuffle. So for our first Spooky Shuffle, that's pretty exciting. I'm sure the numbers have gone up since then. And also a big shout out to your rec team. Today, I stopped by their Oaktoberfest.
Yes, that was today.
And it was adorable, and the kids were just doing so many hands-on activities that had to do with learning about trees, especially an oak tree. So thank you to you and your team for doing such a fantastic job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to Building and Public Property Report, Commissioner Wade.
Yep. Real quick, as the leaves change and the days get shorter, take this time, take the time this autumn to prepare for the oncoming cold weather. Just a reminder to change your furnace filters. Schedule a chimney sweep, replace batteries and smoke detectors. Test emergency backup generators. Inspect and clean your gutters, rake leaves, and disconnect garden hoses. In the Permit Department, the Building Department processed 27 permits from September 9th to October 3rd, 2023, resulting in $28,617.50. Wow, that's a lot. And that brings our total up to $101,131.67 for fiscal year. And then in a side note, the Soccer Tots are on a two-game winning streak. Having beat Bridgeview over the weekend, so that's good. At least the little kids are getting better. So that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Moving on to Public Health and Safety Report, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor Milovich Walters. We'll start with the Police Activity Report for the last two weeks from the period of time from September the 25th. Since October the 8th, the year of our Lord 2023, we had 2,154 calls per service, so up a little bit. Took an additional 31 citizen assist calls and 13 case reports. Unfortunately, had four accident reports. Did arrest one adult. Fortunately, no juveniles. Didn't impound any vehicles. Made an additional 103 traffic stops, of which there were 33 moving violations, an additional 17 adjudication tickets, and 63 speeding tickets. So that's what the Village of Palis Park Police Department's been up to for the last couple of weeks. And then I have a couple of quick announcements. First, some good news. Due to the hard work of Mayor Milovich Walters and Chief Miller, we were awarded funding from the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership. This is a federal Justice Assistant Grant, which reimburses law enforcement agencies and others for up to 50% for replacing a body armor, essentially the bulletproof vests. So we have won a matching grant of $5,000. The vests, depending on the type and what people's specs are, run somewhere between $900 to $1,100 dollars apiece. They have lives. So they save lives, they have lives. Average vest life is, depends on the manufacturer, but somewhere around five years. So thankfully, even if they've not been tested, let's just put it that way, they still need to be replaced on a regular basis. And that's a rather significant cost savings to each of our officers who are mandated to wear a vest while they're working. So again, great news on that. At least it helps to defray a part of the cost. We also have a new program, the Will Cook Grandi Fire Investigation Task Force. So we're in partnership with our Palis Fire Protection District, which provides a collective strength under a unified command while allowing each agency to maintain their own particular autonomy. The goal of this Investigation Task Force is to provide training and education, support, and assistance to local municipalities. So again, this is another one of those programs where there's strength in numbers, right? The Village of Palis Park is relatively small. We have relatively few Palis Fire Protection personnel, as well as Palis Park Police Departments. When we band together with these other agencies, we have the strength in numbers and can provide much more broad types of training, types of education, access to other resources that we might not be able to do if we were just looking to, if you will, feed our own and clothe our own. So there's been a lot of work to try and get us to this particular spot, but we are now part of the Will, Cook, and Grundy County Investigative Task Force. So Chief Miller spent a lot of time, and your efforts are very well appreciated. It's a combination between approved and attediated, so it wasn't going anywhere. National Cybersecurity Month is October. So a couple of things about cybersecurity. If you're following the Palis Park Police Department on social media, we've been posting a lot about trying to keep you safe from cybercrime. There are some obvious sorts of issues. If you use the same password for everything that you do, eventually you're going to find yourself in trouble. So while I don't religiously change my passwords on a weekly, monthly... No, yearly, I'm probably good. And the reason I change them yearly is not because I think, oh, it's time to change my password. I can't remember the freaking password, and I have to create a new one. So there you have it. So use strong passwords and obviously a secure password manager if you're using it. That does not include the little card that's in your wallet that has all of your passwords in it, or worse, your phone. Lose the phone, someone else has got the passwords. Lots of sites now have the opportunity to provide multi-factor authentication, so they're not looking just for a password, but they'll send you a text on your phone or an email just to make sure that it's actually you who's doing whatever voodoo you're doing, like ordering from Amazon. We didn't order from Amazon this week. The guy came, knocked on the door, wanted to make sure we were alive. Also, update your software. So you have old software, it doesn't recognize the vulnerabilities that newer software has. So all those little reminders that you get when you turn the computer on in the morning, if you actually turned it off at night, that says, "Time to update X, Y, and Z", you should actually run those. I know it can be painful, and the longer you wait, the more painful it's going to become. But there are generally security upgrades in those sorts of issues. And then the whole issue of phishing with a PH. So this is an attempt by some nefarious person located generally outside the village to imitate a site. So let's talk about a couple of common ones. Let's first talk about the people who call you on the telephone and tell you that they're the Social Security Administration or the FBI or whatever. They don't call, the IRS is another famous... They don't call you. They send you a letter in the snail mail with a stamp. So if you're getting those kinds of calls, just ignore them. Or you can always call us, and we can help sort through what may be true and may not be true. The other clue is that generally, the IRS doesn't want you to pay your taxes with, oh, I don't know, gift cards. So if they're calling saying you owe X amount of dollars and we'll take Kmart... Oh, they're closed. We'll take Target gift cards, that's probably a scam. The other things to pay attention to are emails. I get the one from UPS all the time that says they're unable to deliver my package, and I need to provide my address, except that when you go to the site, not only do they want you to provide your address, they want you to provide your date of birth, your social security number. UPS does not care what your social security number is, nor do they care when you were born. So these can be pretty deceptive. The logos look like the logos for UPS or for whoever is trying to fish for you. Again, if you have any questions, go to the source. If you have an account with UPS, go to your account. If you have an account with your bank, go to your bank. Don't trust the email that's just come telling you that some terrible thing is going to befall you if you don't send $1,000 in gift cards to this particular person in the next 15 minutes. So again, just a little bit of awareness. And we do work with people on cybercrime, hopefully before it happens. So feel free to give us a call, drop us an email, and say, "Look, I just got this". Take a screenshot, put it in your post or put it on your email, and we'll certainly check it out for you. But I can say that generally, these things are bogus. Little misspellings in the title, an email address that doesn't match the email address of the person who's purporting to represent Target. So the Target email address is not emkzpq@gmail.com. It's not that address at all. So again, just be careful, and if you're suspicious, give somebody a holler, we'll help you out. And then the coolest thing that we're doing this week is we also have another plan to involve the citizens of the village in celebrating the National Faith and Blue 2023. This is a team effort betwixt the Palis Park Police Department and local churches to celebrate national faith and blue 2023. So we're going to be hosting a lunch back at Cog Hill on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, October 11th, at 12:30. As part of the program, there'll be local church leaders that will be present. We certainly invite the public, and I'll be there, and Chief Miller will be there, and we'll have other representatives. So come, let's have a reasonable discussion and think about how engagement between the faith leaders and the police department can better the community. We think it can. Chief Miller? Thank you for your service. I have nothing else.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Counts and Finances, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. To the best of my knowledge, we do not have a formal report this evening. However, I will defer to Mr. Finance Director in the event he has anything. Thank you. We have no report.
Thank you very much. I do not have a formal report. Ooh, who's next? Clerk Garigoni? And Manager Bame?
Nothing for the good of the order.
All right, well, moving on to announcements then. This is like the end of the meeting, very exciting time. Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is canceled for Wednesday, October 11th, as there are no agenda items. Police Pension Board will hold their regular meeting on Monday, October 16th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Captor Administrative Center. The Historic Preservation Committee will not meet on Tuesday, October 17th, as there are no agenda items. The Recreation Advisory Committee will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, October 17th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Recreation Center. The Library Board will hold their regular meeting on Wednesday, October 18th, at 5:00 p.m. in the library. p.m. in the library. The Palest Fine Arts meeting is canceled for Thursday, October 19th. The next scheduled meeting is Thursday, November 16th. The Plan Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 19th, is canceled as there are no agenda items. And then my favorite part, my announcements. We had a really busy week. Our newcomers welcoming ad hoc committee held their second meeting and they shared their progress that they each made individually and planned their next steps to welcoming new families to the village. And then, if you haven't heard, the village is adopting an official village flower. And last week, members of the Garden Guild, Tree Body, and Beautification Committees met to narrow down the options to three flowers based on a specific set of criteria, such as being deer resistant or native to our area and the ease of acquiring these flowers so that everyone can plant them. That's just to name a few. All the residents will have an opportunity to vote for one of the three flowers, and the one with the most votes wins and will become our official village flower. Voting ballots will be included in your next utility bill, so keep your eyes open for that. But if you don't want to check a piece of paper and mail it in or drop it off, you will also be able to vote through my Facebook page. It's called the Village of Palest Park Office of the Mayor. And then you just like the photo that you want to win, and the staff back here will make sure that everyone's legitimately a Palest Park resident that voted, so. So that's very exciting. So please keep a lookout for that. Another thing to share with you, in cooperation with the Cook County Board of Review, the village is co-hosting a free property tax workshop on Thursday, October 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Palest Township Hall, which is located at 10802 South Roberts Road in Palest Hills. There will be tables set up for taxpayers to file their complaint, ask questions, or speak directly to analysts. The flyer is posted on our Facebook page and on our village website, so take advantage of that. If you haven't filed a tax appeal and you want to, they'll help walk you right through it. You don't need a lawyer to do this, you can do it yourself. Another exciting thing that we're starting here in the village, and this came out of somebody coming to conversations with the council. So a resident came in, shared an idea, and we decided to really help build this and get it going. And this is our Palest Park Bee Initiative, a group of residents interested in promoting beekeeping. We will be hosting their first inaugural, that's redundant, inaugural meeting on Thursday, November 2nd, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Palest Park Library. Whether you're an experienced beekeeper or just a wannabe beekeeper, this is for you. So you can RSVP at info@palestpark.org. Just come find out a little bit about it. Doesn't mean you have to get a hive, but. And then lastly, remind you, don't forget to download Simplicity. That is the app that is free to you and free to the village and keeps you in contact with all the organizations and departments within the village. And if you're here tonight, you can always scan the QR code out in the hallway and it'll load onto your phone right away. So now that I'm finally done with all my announcements, it is time for citizens and visitors, comment period, if anybody would like to address the council. Good evening.
Rebecca Mink.
I think so.
Rebecca Wigman, 52, Romina Lane. I stood here maybe four months ago and had a diatribe of comments, and I would like to say that I owe thanks to Rebecca for following up with me about what was going on in the road so I could let the Romina gang know what was happening. It looks fabulous. Now we're wondering, can we get her legal aid in there? I don't think they're done because we don't have the in-the-road reflectors yet. The other person who I mentioned quite a few code violations when I was up here was Mike Wade. Mike, I can't thank you enough for following up. I know that you are continuing because things are not done, but it showed great progress. And there's a lot of us who are very happy with, you know, your due diligence to take care of the code violations here in the park. And of course, Joe Miller, I can never thank him enough. He's always quick to respond to your questions and requests. He just came in tonight, there was a problem, and I knew he might took care of it. I do want to address, on the way here, as I was crossing over La Grange heading east on Carpe, that two cars in front of me turned into the exit-only spot at Whoops. And we all know that there's a safety reason why that is exit-only. I've seen it more than once. I also, last night I was here, asked if you could take a look again at how many people are really parking at Whoops. And honestly, because I'm driving by all the time, this is not a deck parking lot anymore. So I'm hoping that maybe we can hold off, I don't know, maybe parking lot that they want to put up there. And last, but not least, I think, is when is trick-or-treating? We know when trick-or-treating here is in Palest Park this year.
I could talk to you afterwards.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to address the council?
I'm Carol Alicia, 12404 82nd Avenue. And this past summer, my neighbors and I experienced loud parties in our quiet village of Palest Park. I've lived there for 30 years. And it was quite disturbing. I have brand-new neighbors to the north of me, and, you know, they moved here from the city and expected peace and quiet. They had a family party that was disturbed, actually, from the neighbors in Bay of Glass, 80, 30 Avenue. And I just want to thank with all my heart, on behalf of my neighbors also, Chief Miller, who went out of his way numerous times to talk to them. And where else would a police chief do that? Certainly not in the city of Chicago. So I really thank you. We all can immensely. Problem? Nothing. Thank God, it is themselves. It's quiet like a mouse. And I want to thank Rebecca, who also helped immensely. It's our village attorney. So I'm sure you get a lot of complaints. I thought it's about time that someone gave you some kudos. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council? All right, before motion to adjourn, just want to say it's really a pleasure to have people come up and compliment the commissioners and police chief. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to do that. It means a lot to all of us. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
Hearing a motion is second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Polk?
Yes, thank you. Good night, everyone.